Good morning again and welcome to this special session that we have organised, which will take place in three slots. This is the first one, I apologise for the slight delay. We will sort of try to just move along for ten minutes each of the deadlines. I will be chairing this session and trying to keep the time. And first of all, I would like to welcome you all. This is a particularly important session for Martha and myself, as it is really very close to the objectives of our European network called Intrepid, that I mentioned during the plenarys, and it really goes to the heart of some of the matters we are engaging and somewhat struggling with, which is: what is the science agenda? How does it relate to interdisciplinarity in social sciences and humanities? How are the funding agencies dealing with these arenas of knowledge and practice of science? And what are the challenges? And what can the recommendations for the next years of programming, especially from the European programming perspective? So how does Europe fund science? And how can it fund better interdisciplinary research? And how can it deal more effectively with the social sciences and the humanities? Are two sort of underlying questions that we wanted to work on in these three slots that I've mentioned. Now, this morning and this first session will have the interventions of two very interesting perspectives. The first will be offered to us by Peter Fisch, who has very kindly accepted our invitation to give us his view, as someone who has been in the thick of things within the European Commission and is now an independent thinker, back on his own practice and on the experience that he has. The next speaker will be Angela Liberatore, who is also there and who has really kindly also accepted to come and discuss with us the particular perspective of the European Research Council within the Commission. And thirdly, we have invited, and Rosario Macario has very kindly accepted, the challenge to come and join and comment on her experience as one of the scholars here at the University of Lisbon, who has a tremendous experience of actually receiving European funding and therefore dealing with these issues from the other side. So once you go through the process of the Commission, you win a grant and then you have to actually implement it. So without further avail, I'd like to invite Peter to give his presentation. And I will roughly, we said twenty minutes with Q and A. And I will, you want me to queue you at five? Okay.
Yeah. Guten Tag, meine sehr geehrten Damen und Herren! Bon dia and good morning. It's great to see so many of you here in this room interested in a run-through of the history of social sciences and humanities in the framework programme. Basically, the challenge I got from Olivia was to talk in twenty minutes about twenty years. And I will try my best to do this, but I ask for your, have mercy with me. Just a little personal background: I worked for over twenty years in DG Research. Out of this, I was for seven years the head of unit for the Social Sciences and Humanities Unit and also seven years the head of unit in Evaluation and Monitoring. But since 2014, I retired and I'm in my German province town and reflect on what's going on in Europe. I just chose this slide to make sure I have the EU dot EU sign in my web address, but I'm just speaking for myself and that, to be honest, is a nice thing. I wanted, I've thought a bit, how can you structure such a topic? And I came back to the basic suggestion given by my father: if you are confronted with a very complicated subject, try to structure the past, the present and the future, then at least you're sure you have not forgotten anything. So I follow this with a short history of social sciences and humanities from FP4 to Horizon 2020, a look at the achievements and open issues as they are now, and a forward look what are some of the challenges ahead. And instead of some conclusions, I will present you at the end of the day, in all modesty, two things I do not understand. Okay. Let's start with the history of social sciences in the European Framework Programme. And let's start with, in this sense, the pre-history, the period from the very beginning of European research funding up to FP3, 1994, the dark decade, as I called it for the occasion of this meeting, because there was no social sciences and even less humanities in these first three programmes. Research was a relatively new field of activity for the emerging European communities, as they were called at that time. And the key drivers were the willingness to strengthen the independence on atomic energy, that's the origin of the Euroterm programme, and the willingness to build up a very competitive European IT industry, that's the basic argument behind Esprit. Now, I leave it to your judgement what from today's perspective we think about these efforts. But what makes this period also interesting for the understanding of social sciences in the current framework programmes is the fact that a lot of the fundamentals in the way European research programmes are organised stem from this period. The decision to fund essentially projects and no continuous funding. The way to organise framework programmes, to have annual work programmes, to have a top-down programme logic, to organise calls, all these things go back to this dark period, as I called it, well before the start of social sciences and humanities in the framework programme. What is also quite amazing, that all this from a start where you had single pockets of research activity funded by the European communities, this developed within ten years into something like a comprehensive research programme. And that was also the starting point where it became obvious, okay, we cover almost everything, but there's one thing we don't cover, and that is social sciences. And that was a very modest beginning with the targeted social economic research programme under FP4, 1994 to 1998. In retrospect, one could say titles. I mean, when I prepared this talk, it was first of all for me personally a very interesting exercise, because a lot of this is my own history. But it's also very revealing if with a little bit of distance you read all these titles and all these statements, because you discover a lot of tacit implicit things within all the wording chosen. And here, the activity was called targeted social economic research, and from today's perspective, I would say the very first word, targeted, already indicated the whole political direction. This was not meant to cover social sciences as a whole with all the bizarre things social scientists think about. No, it has to be targeted, it should be limited, it should be reduced to a certain number of issues. And it also manifests itself in the three research areas which were defined at the time, basically science and technology, policy, education and training, and social integration. And very interestingly, these three lines of the programme were managed in complete separation, complete independence, don't build any bridges, no interdisciplinarity whatsoever, targeted. And you will see, there is no mention of the humanities at all in all this. Now, I see some people here in the room who have not yet reached my age, so allow me for one slide to illustrate a little bit how the world for managing a European research programme looked like in 1994. The first and very surprising thing from today's perspective is that when the programme started, it got a very hostile reaction from the scientific community. Normally, you would expect if you go as a kind of Santa Claus around Europe and say, look, here is money for you, then people start loving you. No, not at all. There was a lot of criticism why all this is done in the completely wrong way. Partially understandable, I have to admit, but very hostile reaction. And I have to say, it was mainly the establishment, if I may call it, which didn't like the idea that the European Union is fiddling around with academic independence, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we had to work, let's say, not in the positive atmosphere we have even today in comparison, but in a rather, in a fighting mode. Second, there was a widespread expectation that this thing would be a one-time experiment and after four years, everybody would realise it couldn't fly, it was Mission Impossible, it was worth a try, but don't continue, it's worthless, da-da-da-da-da. So very pessimistic connotation to the whole exercise for a number of reasons. Maybe I should mention that at that time, languages were a huge issue. You know, at that time, there were about two-thirds of the proposals we received were written in English, but the other third was written in French, German, Italian, Spanish, et cetera. And of course, the question, how can you compare? How can you evaluate? Da-da-da-da-da, were all very much on the agenda. But there were also, from a technical point of view, almost prehistoric conditions. I mean, there was no internet. Yeah, I mean, humankind has survived for a long while without internet, eh? But in this context, if you want to start a programme at a European scale, it meant basically applicants had to phone in Brussels to get an information pack. The information pack was printed, and there were printed versions in several languages. And we were always hoping that we don't get a request in one of the languages where we didn't have an info pack available and, yeah. Proposal abstracts, that were still allowed at that time, were sent to us by fax. So our fax machine every morning had hundreds of pages and in all kinds of languages. And proposals were sent by mail. And with every call, we had a number of parcels which went lost somewhere, not in translation, but somewhere between Rome and Brussels or wherever. And of course, one of the most difficult tasks was to organise an evaluation process, something which has never been done before, how to find suitable evaluators. And what we did, because there was no other way of doing it, was basically ask people to recommend us people they thought might be suitable for the job. With, in retrospect, I would say, mixed results. And I'm also saying this not to glorify these pioneer times, but also to tell you that what nowadays, we generally recognise as fundamental principles of organising a state-of-the-art research programme, was something that wasn't there from the beginning. You know, in the beginning, we had to do things which are not up to the ethical standards we have today, but we had to establish these. So difficult times, completely different from the situation as we see it today. I will not talk about results in my talk, because first of all, twenty minutes talking about results is hopeless. Secondly, I'm a bureaucrat, I'm not the best person to talk about results, so I take it for granted. FP5, after the end of FP4, surprise, surprise, social sciences did survive. That was the best message of all. And secondly, in FP5, there was a kind of development of a wider perspective, again, a very pompous title, improving the social economic knowledge base. Wow. If you read the short description of the objective, you find one word which made the headlines in the milieus at that time, it's the word cultural. Culture. So for the first time ever, the humanities had a buzzword to hook on and say, okay, we are also for something. You see the topics which, I have to say, when I prepared my talk, I have to say FP5 looks to me the most modern framework programme we ever had. It's pretty close to what is in our mind today. And at this time, FP5 also got the role to coordinate the social sciences activities across the framework programme, something which we have again in Horizon 2020. Then came FP6, with again, a wonderful title, Citizens and Governance in a Knowledge-Based Society, with a new element that what was of interest then was not only to have results and activities, but also to make an effort to structure and essentially to restructure social sciences and humanities in the context of the European research area. And that was a period where the Commission tried to impose some large projects, networks of excellence, integrated projects, the very, very big endeavours. Maybe also not the most successful attempt, but that was, I think, the essential news for FP6. FP7, for the first time, with a relatively technical and simple title, Social Economic Sciences and Humanities, that's honest description, and a list of topics. But the great novelty in FP7 was the creation of the European Research Council. I leave it to Angela to go on the details, but this meant that for the first time, there was a bottom-up activity also for the social scientists in the framework programme. We've an amazing result, that the market share for social sciences and humanities in the ERC went up to sixteen percent, whereas, so to speak, the market share in the top-down parts of FP7 remained at two percent. So quite a striking difference. Then, we are with Horizon 2020, where, to provoke Philippe a little bit, I say, social sciences is everywhere. You will expand on this later on. But this approach to embed social sciences across the entire programme, this societal challenge as the centre of gravity, so to speak, and this very important exercise to systematically cover the funding opportunities in all parts. Now, I've done something which is not exact science. I wouldn't publish it because of quality problems, but I show it nevertheless for the benefit of illustrating a little bit the issues. I'm an economist by training, so I start very often by thinking, what about the money? And for research funding, I think it's a relevant question. So this is funding per year, so the fact that this one for seven years and the others before years doesn't matter, because it's on an annual basis. You see in dark blue, the social sciences and humanities in the core thematic programmes over time. Then you see in green, the funding from the European Research Council. And you find in light blue, social sciences in other parts of Horizon 2020. The truth is, of course, that there was something like this in previous programmes, but it is largely unknown, because nobody ever made an effort to quantify it. So if you look at this picture, you see good news and, in my view at least, bad news. The good news is, well, you see a upward trend, not bad. On the other hand, if you look at the funding for collaborative research in social sciences and humanities, I mean, in the core disciplines, it's not really taking off, it's even slightly shrinking. Achievements and open issues, I mean, in terms of funding, what I found interesting, if you really add up all the money that went to social sciences and humanities from the European programmes over the last twenty years, you end up somewhere around 2.5 billion euros. That's, that's an amount of money. On the other hand, it's true that the market share is still, I wouldn't call it marginal, but it's much below the share of the scientific population we have in Europe. And of course, we are struggling with the fact, okay, Europe funds a lot of things, but there is a lack of national funding for social sciences and humanities in many parts of Europe with all the detrimental effects. Now, beyond the money, there is of course all the effects on training and networking. I mean, there have been over 1,000 projects, there have been more than 10,000 project participants over the last twenty years. I mean, this creates a level of connectivity, which is very important. And of course, you have the effect that after twenty years, a lot of those who were young fellows in the first projects now are in the driving seat somewhere in European institutions. I mean, it's building, building up. When we talk about this, we have to say this connectivity is much stronger in the west and in the north than it is in the east and in the south of Europe. This is a big challenge. And, yeah, talking about standing, this is of course somewhat weak ground, but nevertheless, nobody questions that there is a place for social sciences and humanities in the European research portfolio. It's clear that for a political support, there is a need for evidence and insight from the societal challenges. And also this issue of interdisciplinarity is gaining a lot of ground. I think Philippe will talk in more detail about it. On the other hand, one has to say, social sciences and humanities still has a relatively weak institutional position within the Commission organigram. And for the interdisciplinarity, of course, you can ask the question, who is in the driving seat? Who is developing the research question and the research design, et cetera, et cetera. Now, challenges ahead, innovation. It's the new buzzword in FP7 and in Horizon 2020 and will also be in the next framework programme. Things are maybe not developing in the best possible direction, because there is large emphasis on a very technical concept of innovation and on the concept of direct applicability of the research work done. Maybe we need more groundbreaking work on more fundamental innovation and we need a much broader concept of innovation where also social sciences come in. So instead of incremental product improvement, we need the question, I mean, how to shape our society and economy in the next twenty years. And this is also a bit the idea behind the question of impacts. This seems to be the buzzword for FP9. Of course, you can measure impact in terms of new jobs and growth and what have you, but there is also in research funding a huge long-term impact in training, community building, and also in bringing up disruptive ideas, which is at the end of the day, maybe more important than counting the beans in the short run. And this is also a big challenge for the social sciences to highlight their importance and to develop new conceptual approaches. If Olivia allows me just the two things I don't understand very quickly. Normally, you talk much longer on the things you understand than on those you don't understand. The two things I don't understand, the first one is if we say that collaboration in the social sciences across nations, across cultures, about languages, across languages, generates additional value, much more than collaborative research in, let's say, technical disciplines. Because if you measure a temperature in Sweden or in Rome or in Bulgaria, you should get the same results, whereas if you do social science work in different countries, you get different facets of views. If this is the case, then I don't understand why the social sciences are the only field of research in the framework programme, where the funding for essentially individual researchers in the ERC exceeds by far the funding for collaborative projects. I don't get it. And I have a second thing I don't get. I mean, if we say that Europe is in a deep crisis and the future of the political, economic and social integration of our continent is at risk. I mean, I can be brief on this, I see you nodding, I mean, yeah, that's where we are. Yeah. Why does a European research programme on social sciences and humanity does not address this issue upfront? Here it is, a central problem, and this programme is the best place to tackle it. And why don't we do that? That's the second thing I don't understand. And with this, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Peter. I have, I'm in negative time. I did try, I did try, but it's okay, because it was, I loved the two final questions and they were necessary. So I'll take one question. Catherine, please.
Thank you, love it. Thank you, Peter. Thank you for reminding me of what is also my history, because my professional life goes back to at least framework four, I think. And I was going to pick up on your, the first of your two questions there. I think you've answered it yourself, because you said in an earlier slide that too often the social scientists are relegated to the role of the facilitator within these collaborative projects, whereas the ERC allows the social scientists to set the agenda. We know from a lot of the studies of interdisciplinary collaborations, Andrew Barry's paper, for example, where the social scientists are seen in this kind of subordination service role. And that's often the role that we take or we are given in the framework programme, but ERC allows us to do our own innovative agenda-setting work. So I think that's the answer to the first question.
Thank you, Catherine. That's great. Yeah, Peter, two seconds.
Do I have to respond?
In two seconds.
My point, my reflection is more about what are we doing in the part of the framework programme which is devoted especially to social sciences and humanities. And my question is, are we dealing with the right things? Should we do all this, allow me to say, technical and complicated stuff? Or should we create a space for addressing the real fundamental issues for our continent and for our future? That is my main concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Actually, Angela, may I invite you now to move on? Just whilst you walk the ground, it seems to me, walk slowly, the, it seems to me that the issue that is really interesting and lies for discussion is, because collaboration is so important and cooperation, it seems that a lot of us look for ERC's space to connect, to do that collaboration and that connection somehow, when in a way, it is the core, one of the core themes of the core framework programme that should promote that. But let's see what happens. Angela, the floor is yours. I'll tell you when five minutes are missing and then it's up to you, we have five minutes to question.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I'm really delighted that it was two researchers who tried to answer Peter's question. This is perfectly in the spirit of the This is perfectly in the spirit of ERC bottom up. So if you find that ERC and collaborative research are interesting spaces with different characteristics, this is what we should go for. Now, taking a little bit of my little biography, which is actually connected very much with Peters, because we have been working in the same unit for a little while. I actually started in a different place, socio-economic environmental research. This was even before the targeted programme started. Meaning, at that time, there was at least one programme which hosted a unit and a part of the programme which was specifically devoted to socio-economic, it was called, aspects of those environmental issues. That's probably not surprise. Sustainability science was mentioned this morning as one of this kind of magmatic interdisciplinary areas of studies. That unit was dissolved and there are no other unit existing doing the same job. And this is maybe one of the issues for Philippe's consideration on, you know, how can we do the mainstream best and the integration and so on and so forth. There was another space run by somebody called Ricardo Petrella, which was Forestide. Forestide was actually mainly social sciences and humanities, where it was about urban issues, population, demography and so on. Forestide also declined quite a lot in the meantime. So this is just to say again, I interpret my job as a former researcher, having been working for twenty years also in research, planning, programming, management and so on, to facilitate, to create spaces, including budgets, for the scientific community to play and to be, the commission is supposedly the guardian of the treaty, and I think that we should play the role of being the guardian of pluralism in science. So we need to create spaces where all possible streams of science, in the way scientists find it better to go, should have a place. So from that point of view, I think we should always try to play win-win and never win, you know, win-lose situation. So we need to create spaces. Now, with this insipid, let me go for my presentation. So the point for me is to start with the two questions, which is, who decides what is interdisciplinarity? And I will not go into the difference between inter, multi, transdisciplinarity or postdisciplinarity and so on. And whether and when it's good to go for it? My answer, which I believe is my personal answer, but also the ERC answer, is the researchers themselves. Having said that, I'm also a political scientist as a background, I have been working with some economists along the way, and the market is not always completely auto-regulated. So the regulators to create the spaces need to be sure that if the scientists want to go for certain things, also have the means to do that. And I think that the presentations this morning and the purpose of this workshop is to say, if people really want to go for interdisciplinarity, there are a lot of barriers to it, whether it is about publications, careers, recognition and so on and so forth. So the scientists should decide, the institutions should provide the spaces for scientists to be able to do it. What I think the institution should not do is to command the scientists and now you only do interdisciplinarity. And you do it now, because on this topic, it only works if you do it. That's the way I see it. And I think that in collaborative research and in ERC, there are the spaces for the scientists to play and to get the means. I think that there is still work to do to make sure that really the barriers are put down for those who really want to do it. And I think this is really work in progress for all of us in the institution and in the community. The second question is about should social sciences and humanities open up more? And this morning we have three metaphors, I will come back to that. And maybe should we move, and I say we, as, you know, have been being working in this field and being that my background, move a little bit from victimization to empowerment? We often say we are somehow used or misused, a little bit like, you know, the cosmetic addition to an engineering project or, you know, natural scientific project and so on. That's actually very often the case, let's be honest, this is very often happening. But how many times do we sit in what Peter calls, who sits in the driving seat? How many times we in social sciences and the humanities invite scientists from natural sciences, physics, engineering, biology and so on, to say, hey, I have this question, I have these issues I want to address, but I also need your contribution? Should we maybe dare to open up a little bit more and be using what we preach in some areas of research that is empowerment? So I think that this is maybe one of the areas where we can try to have a little bit of, you know, a cultural shift or perception shift. Of course, this is easier to say than to practise. And again, the institution need then to be able to give the space if social scientists are the one inviting colleagues in other areas of work to come. This morning, by the way, we got a very nice explanation of what openness meant in the, in the report or at least in the interpretation of it by Oskali. And he said, well, open can mean tearing down barriers and getting to this big unified magma of all areas of knowledge, at least in the social sciences. Or it might be open doors that you can open or close, you know, to regulate the flows, depending on what you consider useful. I was missing one, and maybe because of my, you know, almost genetic affection and professional experience and personal attachment to the idea, I was missing the idea of opening borders. And I literally mean it, borders of countries. This means, why do we have a European programme at all in research? Because we need people in different areas of science to cooperate across borders. Now, this has important implication for social sciences and all areas of sciences with regard to the fact that first of all, disciplines in different cultural environments do not necessarily look the same. You speak with certain sociologists in one or the other countries, historians in one or the other countries, lawyers, let alone many other areas, and you know, they are not exactly the same. So that's one added value plus in terms of interdisciplinary knowledge. It also has practical implication. Well, I was actually warmed up when, in three occasions, the scientific community stood up in the public sphere, saying, we want not to be closed in our national borders. You call it Brexit, the scientific community was strongly about, we want to remain in the European framework programme, we want to be connected with our colleagues in science. How to do that with Brexit, hard, soft and whatever, that's a different issue. But the scientific community had a very clear idea about not wanting to be nationalized. Israeli scientists, when there was the issue of Israeli association to Horizon 2020, and we had provided the guidelines on the participation of Israeli entities, saying, we cannot fund Israeli entities beyond the sixty-seven borders, that's international law, nor their activities beyond those borders, not big deal, but it created a lot of issues and the threat of not becoming part. The Israeli scientists stood up, saying, we want to be part of the framework programme, we don't want to be severed from our colleagues in Europe. Switzerland, actually ERC was the only part left for Swiss scientists to participate because the issue of mobility was interpreted as not really applying to ERC because it is PIs, principal investigator oriented. Of course, this is a bit of a fiction, because all principal investigators are crossing borders and cooperating and have teams in different places, but at least this was the space to say, yes, we want to keep the Swiss with us. And the Swiss wanted to be kept with us. And the good news, we have at least one good news in 2017, Switzerland is back fully in Horizon 2020. Let's start at least with one piece of good news. Okay, now to make the more presentation. The first question was, who decides what is interdisciplinarity? And I spare all the graphs and you will get them, so. Who decides what interdisciplinarity? So my answer was the scientists themselves. This is truly what we at least think in ERC. Now, in a very quick and dirty analysis that my colleagues in the analysis unit did at ERC about interdisciplinarity in the 450 projects that really did put interdisciplinarity big in the centre of their abstracts, so with the keywords, this was coming like, we are interdisciplinary. The frequency of terms that comes is this. Now, I think this is very interesting. You have, for example, we always see humanities are quite relegated still. Look at history, it's as big as social. Of course, we see very big quantum. And this morning we said, well, we have some engagement, and Felicity will speak about it tomorrow, and I'm so sorry tomorrow I cannot be with you, about the, the links between social sciences and biological sciences, and biology is very, very big. Quantum, this is an area where interdisciplinarity is strong, not very much however with social sciences. As somebody with a philosophy background, I wonder why? Physics and philosophy have been always connected. So there are a lot of things to be, to be discussed with that, so that's one pattern. Now, this morning we had some presentations, some comments made about the working and institutional working of the different areas of science in different countries and so on. Now, one very wise decision when the European Research Council was established in 2007 was that this would cover all areas of research, including social sciences and humanities. This is actually quite an exception to the rule. When we negotiate implementing arrangements with council in other countries, very often we see that we have to speak at least with two entities, two ministries, if not more, because one only covers biologies or medical sciences, one only covers natural sciences and engineering, and the social sciences and humanities are with education or with some other places and so on. ERC is one. It's the acknowledgement that all areas of research are legitimate areas of research. So that's quite a good thing. We have five, twenty-five panels, I will show them to you in case. Okay, it's true. Social sciences and humanities have the lowest number of panels, six out of twenty-five. Now, the numbers of proposals now, as I speak, in social sciences and humanities are the same number as in life sciences. So we don't know how long this structure will hold or what will happen with this, but this is to say, hey, the scientific community in social sciences and humanities comes big and has the capacity to use that space. Let's keep using it. As I said, interdisciplinarity for us is a bottom-up choice rather than a prescription. We do not have a specific panel on interdisciplinarity, because interdisciplinarity applies to most, if not all the panels you will see, as well as being across the panels that we have. And I will go to that. And we have a procedure for cross-panel evaluation, and I will finish with that. This is the panel structure. If you look at it, basically what comes is that in physical sciences and in human, in social sciences and humanities, but would say especially in the latter, we have a more sort of thematic approach in the titles, which then cluster different types of disciplines and disciplinary approaches. If I just take one, cultures and cultural production, hey guys, there you have philosophers, performance and art studies, anthropologists, languages, that's a big cultural studies, that's, I mean, if, if this is not interdisciplinary in itself, you tell me what else it is. Now, the point is that very often we have proposal, let's say, from SH5, including somebody in, let's say, earth sciences, because they need to use a certain device to check about, I don't know, papiers or whatever. And the same for others. So this is to say, we speak about interdisciplinary collaboration and cross-panel evaluation, but most of the panels are interdisciplinary. Of course, if you look at P1 mathematics, okay, for the mathematicians to have all this subset of mathematics is to be interdisciplinary. And for the economists in SH1, having finance, management and economics is already quite interdisciplinary. For others, like in SH5, this is like, you know, economics plus. So it depends also on the communities. Now, submissions to panels, that I think it's an interesting figure, especially starting grant, and I should also add ERC puts most of its effort in young scientists. Starting grants are the largest part of the budget for extremely good reason, I will not need to develop. Now, the starting grantee started off putting a lot of panels, saying, I want to be evaluated by submitting a proposal here, but this is also relevant for this and this and this and this. Over time, this has been decreased, decreasing, and the same happens for consolidator grants. For advanced grants, they have been more careful, we would be not too surprised, so the pattern is a bit different. I will not go into that. So as I said, as an evaluation, we have a primary panel that, that assesses the proposal and then we get contribution from secondary panel reviews to contribute as well. Now, what is the success rate? Well, in terms of success rate, just look at the final one here. The success rate in the first step, we have a two-step evaluation, is that, uh-uh, in the first step, what is cross-panel is less successful than what remains in one panel. And probably this is also, you know, the word spread, and maybe this is also why over time, people are a bit more careful in suggesting a second panel. Can we do something about that and what happens? The second is that in step two, however, this, this column is higher. So the, the success rate, once you go to first step, then the success rate in actually getting the proposal further is much better. And there are also cases where actually this gets even higher, okay? Success rate by domain, and I finish basically with this. Success rate by proposal is not that there is a big difference by domain, life sciences, physical sciences, social sciences and humanities. Actually, what you see is that in one case, in social sciences and humanities, and in one case, in life sciences, the, the success of cross-panel proposals, and we call it ID just to be short, but as I said, there are a lot of interdisciplinary proposals within panels, have a higher success rate. So it's, it's an ambiguous, mixed kind of evidence we have, and I will not go to that. Just one point here. Forty-two of the projects funded tend to have connection with other panels. Hey, this is close to fifty percent, right, forty-two? That's not a bad proportion. Out of those, however, you'll see that LS is the champion in having proposals across panels, within or across domains. Social sciences and humanities is the second one with forty-five. Physical sciences and engineering is a bit more careful, thirty-one. When we see who drives, it's LS. Proposal interdisciplinary try, have most connection towards LS and the list with SH. Having said that, in both physical sciences, engineering and social sciences and humanities, we have twenty-nine percent of proposals encouraging and taking some kind of lead in, in involving other sciences. So the question maybe for us is, coming back to my first, one of my first questions, are we in the social sciences and humanities proactive enough, empowering ourselves also to invite colleagues in other social sciences and humanities, but also other areas of knowledge to address the questions? And I close with this, there are other slides you will get anyhow, and if there are questions, I will be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I maybe take one or two questions before moving to the third speaker? I don't know whether there are. You've been overwhelmed by statistics. Yes, please.
A question on the, for synergy grants, which have been, will be reintroduced this year. So they were, was it 2014 or whatever it was?
Earlier, yeah.
Yeah, one year, then they were discontinued, then there was an evaluation panel, and now they are reinstituted. Is that the prime spot where interdisciplinary, where we'll be, you know, given opportunities? How do you see the future of the synergy grants?
Okay.
In terms of interdisciplinary?
So, the question can be answered in two ways. One is about the intention and the other is the practice. So, the practice, again, bottom-up, it depends on what the scientists will do with it. Will they see synergy as the primary place for interdisciplinarity? They are welcome to do so. Is the aim to do so? No. The aim is that synergy means synergy between different and complementary areas of knowledge, which can be within and across disciplines, within and across domains. We do not mandate which are the complementarities scientists should come up with, and especially, frankly, we do not see this as the ghetto for interdisciplinary projects. As I said, most of the panels are, can host interdisciplinary research. Well, the fact that they have this mix of different disciplines doesn't mean that, you know, scientists are using all the mix of discipline within panels or across panels, but interdisciplinarity is welcome everywhere. Synergy, admittedly, just by this notion of synergy, we think will might attract more attention to interdisciplinarity, and it's one of the element. But the notion of synergy is really complementary work, and it's for the scientists to play how they see. So, I don't know how the scientists will play for it, but we are quite excited about starting it again, because the experience after the evaluation of the first round of synergy, they were discontinued simply because it was so successful that the success rate was close to lottery. It was around two percent in some cases, and then the scientific council said, well, let's see, is there so much demand and for some foundation, or are we getting into something that will not deliver much? And because the twenty-four projects going were assessed as actually very interesting, then the idea of the scientific council was to start it again.
I have a question at the back. Oh, I have too many questions. Yes, please.
Maybe we can gather the questions and then I ask all of them.
Okay, ah, that's a very good strategy. Yes, so.
Thank you, Angela, that was very interesting.
Name and, please say the name of the institution I forgot to ask.
Thiago Centro, currently at the Portuguese Foundation for Science and Technology, which is the research council. And I was quite interested in the panel, in the, well, the structure of the panels in which it's run now. It's interesting also because, for example, in Portugal in recent years, the last calls actually replicated the panel structure of ERC. And it's pretty curious because, as you noted, it is in the social sciences and humanities that the denominations of the panels are actually more open to interdisciplinarity, so to say, more kind of from a theme base rather than a disciplinary base. Can you say something further on why is that so? Are the social sciences actually more open? Is it some kind of reflection from the socio-economic sciences programme in the collaborative part of the, of the FPs?
That would, okay, I had, Martha Endoyt.
Hi, Doris Alexander, Trinity College, Dublin. Just re-putting together two, two things that have been mentioned. First of all, Peter had mentioned this definition of impact, and of course, the ERC programme had carried out an impact of projects up and running, and I think that was actually quite a good study to show that ERC was having very good impact. And I just wondered whether there was a possibility of refining that a little bit going forward, because I know you're going to continuously have impact, to look at the impact of those projects particularly that have interdisciplinarity, because that can help, kind of fuel the argument that funding interdisciplinarity is actually very fruitful.
Martha, short and sweet, the question is.
What is it? Huh? No, I'm just getting your answer back to you.
Very Socratic method.
Your question back to you, I mean, are we in the SSH proactive enough in going for other disciplines? I assume no. So, I'm asking you, why do you think that is?
Oh, Philippe, we need to have another question, I think, if Philippe asks, right?
Okay. Interestingly, in your last one, you say that interdisciplinarity between SSH and, let's say, general SSH is close to thirty percent, right? And previously, you speak, you spoke about success rates, the, of, you asked me what you showed this one. And crossing to what we do in the collaborative research, I just wondered whether the success rate for this thirty percent of final proposals or projects was the same as in the general interdisciplinarity that you showed previously? Because you, you tend to say that interdisciplinarity altogether was, are good? Very good. What about interdisciplinarity success rates between SSH and NSH, if you have good data? I mean, if you have broken one?
Yes, uh, okay, voila.
Because when you said two panels, it would be two panels within, by senses, or two panels within the station, so.
Excellent. Thank you. Wonderful.
And you have other things to do about it.
Okay. Well, first of all, I know in the room there is at least one person, Bjorn, who has been panel member in S, you know, in ERC. So, Bjorn, if you want to help me with any question, I will be very happy, and I think other people who have been grantees or, or, and so on, so, you know, take the floor, you're most welcome to help. Now, why SH more thematic rather than other areas? Now, this goes back to the time of the establishment of ERC in 2007. I was in collaborative research at the time, as you might remember, Tiago. And I think it's partly because SH, being the smaller part at the table, had to cluster more. And if you try to cluster and you say, okay, and we put in a panel, economics and demography and politics and law and so on, people will say, oh, 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 okay. If you say we do markets and institutions and behaviours and, you know, and, okay, or if you tell the linguists and the psychologists and the philosophy of mind and so on, you know, you sit together and say, oh, you know, we philosopher don't have enough space, we psychologists rather work with their neuroscientists, or absolutely not, and whatever. If you say the human mind and its complexity, we can go for it. That's my exposed interpretation. Maybe I'm too much into the, you know, political science approach to history of science, but I guess this might have been one of the reasons. Voila. But, you know, I, I'll post the question again to the colleagues, to the, our beautiful science council, and I must say, this year is the tenth anniversary of ERC. There will be celebration in the week of the twenty of March, so you can address scientific council members who will come or, or go around and so on and post that question if you wish. I will do it when I go home anyhow. ERC impact and interdisciplinarity? Well, yes, we'll try to study it better. There has been a working group on interdisciplinarity, which is, by the way, finally who led also to synergy and so on. It depends, you know, the problem is that measuring impacts, if we take the notion that Peter has been working in evaluation a lot, and is not just, you know, trying to measure economic impacts in doing jobs or, or developing new patents and so on, where social sciences and humanities, you know, we can pretend, but let's not overdo it. If you take it impacts in knowledge production and so on, the tendency is to do bibliometric, bibliometric studies. We also do it in ERC, and we are aware that there are areas of research where this simply is almost meaningless, and impact factors as well. We have interesting alliances, the mathematicians and many of the physicists are in total agreement. But, so, we will need also to have new methods to do this impact for interdisciplinary projects. First, we have to define again what it is, and if we do it bottom-up, you know, I started with this slide, is an imperfect method, but I think at least it's an honest one, if you want to be bottom-up, but we need to structure it better, and then we have to see how we measure it in a way which is not just bibliometric studies, because if there is one thing we know about interdisciplinary barriers, is in terms of publications. There are very few journals which are truly interdisciplinary, so, you know, not that easy. Are we proactive enough? Let me allow myself to keep just asking the question. I think, okay, let's be honest, if I ask that question, it's because I think maybe we can do a bit more, maybe we can be a bit more daring and be a bit more, you know, empowering ourselves a little bit more, and I think there are cases, and again, this conference has been doing it. You know, the fact that tomorrow Felicity speaks, that's one, you know, I never, I never met her, I don't know whether, if she's in the room, but that's one example where people in social sciences brought along people in neurosciences, right? So, there are surely very interesting cases. Success rate, Philippe, I think I'm shut down, so we can discuss it a bit later.
Thank you. Thank you, Angela, thank you very much. And now, we'll have another one, haven't you? And I just realized, however, you have a PDF. So, I hope that you are less challenged than me with my, with PCs, because it's there, but how do you put it as a video?
Well, uffschere aqui.
I got a, I like this. Well, we can try and make it what to the PDF. Yes, explain it, it should blow it. I think the gentleman is coming to help.
Ah, okay.
Is there a PDF, please, no, so? Sorry, I didn't realize it was a PDF, so I didn't even try, try it. We, I just want to say, we started with a ten-minute delay, so I will eat seven minutes of your lunch, if that's all right. For those of you who have a lunch ticket, it will be upstairs. Ask, when you get to reception, ask for instructions, but it's, it's on the third, I believe it's on the third floor, we'll check. The rest of you, the, the Gobinkin Foundation is surrounded by small cafes and restaurants. I advise you to walk out of the foundation and turn, cross the road and turn right, and there will be several bars and cafes within about four minutes, but walking distance or less. The target will be twenty-five minutes from the twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, perfect. So, good morning, everybody. So, and thank you for inviting me. I think it was a very challenging invitation, and, and after some thought, I decided to start with these photos, not because of the aesthetic of the photos, but to tell you that this is all accessibility. And, and accessibility has the result of what we have when we use the instrument transport. And just by looking at the pictures, you see the diversity. So, in terms of funding, and not only European, but funding in general, fifty years ago, we were seen as only technology, vehicles, transportation. After the FP4 programme, we gained space, because we had already more than ten years of misfitting, because we started moving into interdisciplinary grounds, and we could not fit in any of the categories of the funding programmes, because we were always misfitting. FP4 guide us into social sciences and find us a place in social sciences by recognizing the interdisciplinarity of everything that comes from transport, accessibility and mobility. But we didn't stop there. We continued, and in fact, we moved into what we can call transdisciplinary. So, we are beyond what is the merging or the common contributions of two or more disciplines. So, we, we start developing areas in, that do not fit in any of the previous disciplines. And this is what I'm going to, if I can, oops. I'm going to, to start to, 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 to show you by looking back a little bit and show you what we have developed and what have been the priorities in the transport field, and largely related to the European programmes in the last years, some of which are remaining still valid. So, lifestyles, demographic, health trends have been one of the fields where we have in fact moved, and we have obtained an increased awareness of what are the benefits of active modes, and bringing back accessibility to the top of the political agenda and to the top of the programmes. Big data emerged in the last decade as one of our main feeders in terms of providing us with information for the development of analyses. In terms of objectives, decoupling freight and GDP relation has been one of the priorities of several years of research programmes. And in the last years, we have, we started to address it also the last mile. So, we reached also, even on the freight side, we reached the urban environment, so which means that the urban is in fact a domain where we are much concentrated, not because we are giving less importance to what is non-urban, but because the population is concentrating in urban areas. And in fact, since FP4, we have been focused on the, a message that FP4 put forward that was the citizen at the centre, and this is in fact where transport has anchored itself in terms of research. Technological revolution, the smart mobility that entered into, especially into the last five, ten years, very supported by ICT and other technology, or just by dignification of mobility, the shared economy, which is more recently, and it has its first declinations also on mobility, and on looking into new business models, which is also one of the key words that has more recently entered the, the programmes of, of transportation, and very heavy concerns related with weather-related threats, and this very much bringing the technology. We have many changes that affect our challenges, and this is why we, to a certain extent, we are pushed into the misfitting reality in relation to, to the programmes. Let's see, a number of facts. Slow growth of the world, no longer serving, the, the financial turmoil caused in emerging markets that are not, not any longer serving as an economic driver. The financial and economic prospects are in fact providing us a reality that was revealed through the financial easing, and it resulted in the depreciation of the euro. We would say, well, what the hell is this related with transport? Well, it is. What are the implications? Well, delayed maintenance of infrastructure, mass transit systems with negative impacts on accessibility, congestion, safety and security. This is completely at the core of our research programmes. Second fact, the COP21 agreements, they are in the political agenda very high. What are the implications? Transport industry has now a very clear agenda, which is related, and a mandate that is related with this, this aspect. Cities, for the first time, and we are talking about cities for many, many years, decades, but for the first time, also have a clear mandate and a clear transport agenda. Security. Security threats are targeting Europe. Implications, resilience of the systems and an increase in complexity, and of course, an increase in costs that comes out of, out of complexity. Another set of facts, disalignment with environmental targets. The lawyer, the lower oil price is in fact impacting negatively in some of the economic drivers, and is turning the picture upside down, and, and is forcing some countries, some sectors to disalign from the environmental targets. This implies that it is more difficult to justify energy emission saving measures, for example. This is one of the facts that changes. The focal points for all our changes are in fact cities. We are very much focused in the society of cities. We cannot forget that seventy-five percent of the European population is already living in urban environment, and we expect an exponential growth of this. And so, cities brings us the most challenging example of integrated problems, so the main hurdles are here. Poverty, exclusion, health, these are problem issues that are looked at from the transport point of view, from the transport perspective. And that is why the interdisciplinarity starts to be very narrow, on the supply chain side, but also on the people side. Today, what are the challenges? Basically, we have three big groups of challenges that are going to be addressed largely in the coming programmes in the European funding system. So, the first one, mobility and access for all, which is So the first one, mobility and access for all, which is our mantra for some years and its contribution to the inclusive society. But list is leading us to what? To aging problems, gender problems, individual restrictions. So we are going to enter into a period in which the restricted mobility is not any longer only for the people who have deficiencies. No, the aging phenomenon is going to make us a society of restricted mobility largely. And this is a reality that is affecting the transport element and the mobility element from the simple technology to the most complex interaction between the human and the technology and its use. The second group of challenges for the future research, developing sustainable and resilient urban transport that is able to comply with the environmental objectives, but it is also able to maintain urban transport system adaptable, adjustable to what are the new challenges. Third group, maintain the competitiveness of cities. And here implies introducing a system of innovation, a system that allows knowledge building, but also that allows quality of governance and decision-making. And we see this every day in our lives. We see new markets, new solutions that are coming up out of the common contribution of an economic crisis in one hand, unemployment in another and creativeness in another. And we see solutions coming up that simply don't fit anywhere, that regulation does not know what to do with it. And so we need to be more adaptable. And we don't have research yet for these domains. So mobility and access for all has been our mantra for many years. I'm going to accelerate a bit, but there is a reinforcing combination loop of poor generations with new traveling and communication patterns. And this is caused by unemployment, but is also caused by the increase of exclusion of populations for different domains. The baby boomers generations are going to be transformed in an aging society. And this is by far one of the most critical problems. When you look at the different funding sectors, you start understanding that only across the different disciplines we are able to fit the programs of research that will enable us to solve these problems. What other challenges we have? The synergies, of course. Yes, but the synergies are going much beyond what is the transportation field and what is the generation of the motives for transportation. The synergies implies bringing land use, bringing urban and regional planning, bringing value chains and even managing conditions for the effective enforcement. So it implies also redesign of urban space and it implies adaptation of the transport systems. Decarbonization is a challenge. It's a core challenge, but it has to be enforced, it has to be induced, it has to be motivated. And here, in all this that I'm saying, we have the citizen's behavior at the center of everything. And we have the necessity of creating the foundations of what are the new horizontal coordination interfaces and their respective analyses. And we need this to be done with institutional transport and shared economy between local authorities, transport providers and web-based services. It is a very extensive interaction. And multidisciplinarity, for sure. Interdisciplinarity may be not sufficient. Maybe we must move to the transdisciplinary perspective. Consequence, an urgent need of integrated approach to research with other areas, urban living labs, ICT, nanotechnology, energy and biometrics. We already have some examples of this tendency in the field. So we have to move from a uniperspective approach to a problem-oriented research labs. And because our root is the problem, the problem of aging, the problem of quality of governance, the problem of employment, the problem of health. And problems are multidisciplinary by default. And the human nature is, in fact, what determines the success of technology and innovation in the interaction with the humans. What has been our main weakness? We have a tremendous successful approach in European research. People like me, who has started in the nineteenth decade, so at the time that Peter, thank you for recalling, that we were still sending proposals by fax and which was an adventure. It is tremendous, the progress we have done in these years. And we would not have done it without such type of European programs. So I'm one of the persons that are more praising the existence of these programs, even if they have been ineffective in some areas. But even the ineffectiveness contributed to our development. But we have a major weakness on this. We have done very well in the research process, monitoring results, disseminating, disseminating and promoting projects, et cetera. But we did not done, we have not done very well in the outreach, in the results, in the impact, in bringing the society, the stakeholders, into the utilization of what we do in terms of research. And this is one of our bottlenecks in terms of funding, is the fact that we did not, we were not able to involve sufficiently the industry. Because the industry is very sensitive to what are the real problems of the world because it is their market. But we were not able to bring them together. We have an example moving in these directions from the last years, which is the models that have been put forward, the innovation model put forward by the European Innovation Technology Institute. And which brings together precisely the innovation capabilities, the growth, economic growth, the jobs, so the industry, the academics, the dissemination. And we need to move more and more into this integrational model that allows, in fact, to represent the living lab, the real world, into the generation and understanding of the problem, but also generation of the solution and of the funds for research. So the main challenge is really to give one long step further still, that might take us one decade or more still, that is to move from what is the knowledge triangle to the stakeholders' engagements. And there are three big steps here. Building an active culture that we still did not consolidate it. Bridging to society, which implies awareness from the society side, but also our understanding of the problem and be problem-oriented in the definition of the research programs and go beyond the borders of the different disciplinary fields and go to the stakeholder engagement. And define the research programs with stakeholder engagement. It is very difficult in many of our European countries, and we are one of those difficult countries. There is no culture for that still, and so we are still in the first step. Some other countries are already bridging to society and a few are already with the stakeholders' engagement. But these are the three steps that the research programs must be developing and utilizing. And so what we need is to build futures for an inclusive society. The FP4 mantra, mobility for all, citizen at the center of the decisions, is still valid, but we need to move forward. Thank you.
We have time for one question, really. I don't know whether there is a... Because the reason why I asked Lizada to be so kind as to come was that she represents a very interesting topic, which is transport, or rather, you would say, accessibility.
Accessibility.
But we did call it transport in the nineties and that in itself...
We called it mobility and now we are at a stage of accessibility.
Of the accessibility. And the issue really was to have the perspective of someone who is more an engineer and an economist looking at us in the social sciences and the humanities at this conference and telling the story from the other side, which of course is very important because we need to understand all sides of the discussion.
And I think it's important.
You were very positive, in fact. And looking back at the history of the work you've done, you're basically saying, social sciences and the humanities are really engaging in the arena of work, that once we consider a technical arena.
Absolutely. We have found our space within social science, that is clear. We were a typical field of misfitting in all research programs because we were just a little bit there, a little bit there, but we were always misfitting. And in fact, it is in social science that we found our space of development. But more and more, we see that we need to go across the borders and we see that the world, in fact, needs to go across the borders in terms of domains of science.
Well, this afternoon, I will be asking you in particular, but all, what are the things that you really would like us to improve on nonetheless? Even if overall it's a success story, but you've also said there are things that we didn't do well, but we learned from those as well, which is the best one can hope for. But in the afternoon, what we will also want is really, how do we think for the next ten years of research, what else can be done and what really needs to change so that we really serve? I think you listed such a wonderful agenda, actually, of the main challenges that society has. So with that in mind, what else can funding agencies, as important as the European ones, do to help address that agenda as effectively as possible into the future?
Yeah, okay.
So with this agenda in mind, this afternoon, we are back in this room, so that will be the easy part. We have roughly forty minutes for lunch, for which I do apologize. But please come back and we have the first session after lunch, then a coffee break and then there will be a world cafe. And thank you very much for coming and I hope you enjoy the lunch. And please come back later.